Called a meeting to order of Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Welcome, everyone. Glad to see you. Sorry I can't be there with you tonight, but I am having a little fun with my family on a trip. So if I lose you during this, our internet has been kind of crazy, then just keep going. Don't worry about it. But hope not. It's been working fine for the last couple Zooms that we've had Becky and I both have had down here, so we'll move into it. As we get started, we normally do, we'll have a moment of silence in just a minute and our pledge of allegiance, but as we go to that, let's continue our prayers for our community and for our state, our nation, our county, everyone who is still going through all this. I know everything is changing quickly and cases are still moving in the wrong direction. We wanted to move in a better direction and hopefully we'll see that soon. Schools are trying to make great decisions right now about what to do, and we pray for our leaders there as they continue to try to make the right decisions to get our children back in schools or whatever we have to do to do that. And I know they're working on that. I think they had a meeting today about it in Caldwell County and I know around the state. So we appreciate that. But continued prayers for everyone. I know we had several things happen in one of our rest homes today. There was another little outbreak, and we hope that that will not go badly. So please pray for all those in our community in every way you can. Our leaders, thank you guys who are out on the front lines and taking, doing all the things you can. For those in our city that we've had a few that have been involved with COVID, please pray for all of them in our different departments and keep them in your thoughts and prayers. One other thing I'll mention, one of our leaders in our community for many, many years, Mr. Steve Kincaid passed away a week or so ago, 10 days ago. Leader at Kincaid Furniture and of course lazy boy. Steve was a fine gentleman, knew him very well, grew up with him, and he will be sorely missed in our community. Always a great philanthropist and Kincaid has been a great part of our community for so many years. So we will certainly miss him. So please keep his family and all of their family in your thoughts and prayers as we go to this time. Now, if you will, let's please rise for our moment of silence and we'll remain standing Thank you. If you will, please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will get started first with a roll call of everyone who is with us either there in the council chambers or on the Zoom, starting, and I will call everyone's name out down the list. If you would, please unmute and say you're here, and then please mute back when you finish that. Mayor Pro Tem Chrissy Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Jonathan Beal.
Here.
Councilmember Todd Perdue.
Here.
Councilmember Ike Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Ralph Presswood.
Here.
Councilmember David Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Ben Willis.
Here.
Our city attorney TJ Rohr. City manager Scott Hildebrand.
Here.
City clerk Shirley Cannon.
She's here, I saw her on the.
Okay. Communications director Joshua Harris.
I'm here.
Finance director Donna Bean.
Here.
Our fire chief Ken Hare.
Here.
Economic development director Kaylin Horn. Chief of police Brent Phelps.
Here.
Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
He's here, I saw him.
I'm here.
Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
Here.
Our planning director Jenny Wheelock.
Here.
And our public works director Jared Wright.
Here.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being with us this evening. And our first order of business tonight, we will introduce our new principal at High Brighton High School, a longtime principal and teacher in our community, longtime Courtney Wright, the better half of our own Jared Wright. And we're glad to have Courtney, Courtney with us from High Brighton tonight to address the council and tell us about what is going on with some activities for High Brighton coming up. Courtney, we're glad to have you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Givens, fellow council members, and Mr. Hildebrand. Give me one second, I've got my mask hung. Just going to remove that. Thank you. I am Courtney Wright, and I'm very proud to serve as the principal at High Brighton High School. I know that Mr. David Colwell has served there for the past eight years. He is one of my mentors. He's one of the best administrators in education that I've ever worked for and ever worked with. So he has done an excellent job. I think it's because of his leadership, the hard work of our staff, and the commitment of our students and families that High Brighton High School has established a reputation of excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. They also have partnered with the city of Lenore and maintained a partnership, and I'm here tonight because I want to continue that partnership and I also want to strengthen the partnership that we have. So that you know a little bit about myself, I have two priorities every day when I go to work. Number one, every student and staff member must go home safe at the end of the day. And number two, our students will learn. Those are my priorities. Also, I wanted to let you know I've already reached out to some members of your staff here with the city of Lenore. So I've already met with Chief Hare, and Chief Hare, thank you so much for meeting with me and going over some of our safety plans and ensuring that we do provide that safe environment for our students and our staff to work and learn. I've also met with Officer Spears, who is our school resource officer. He and I have a great working relationship so far, so I look forward to continuing that. And I also look forward to meeting other members. I know many of the staff members here with the city of Lenore, but I look forward to working with everyone in a new capacity. I asked my staff one time at an opening staff meeting, why do we come to work every day? So why do we get up every day and come to work? And one of my teachers said, to educate students. And I said, why? Why do we educate students? And this is my answer that I gave to my staff and the answer that I give to you. Because we are going to improve the quality of our students' lives. Our teachers are going to be better because they came to High Brighton today. Our students are going to be better people because they came to High Brighton. We are there to make sure that we create individuals who are productive members of this community that are employed and able to be citizens that really contribute to improving the quality of life, not just for themselves, but also for this entire city and our county. So I am a very competitive person, and my husband can attest to this. So I will tell you this, I will do my best. I will be the best at being the principal at High Brighton High School, or I will die trying. So I go to work every day. I'm paid with taxpayer dollars. I take that very seriously. So I will do everything that I can to make sure that our students receive the premier education that each and every one of them deserves. So I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. I look forward to continuing our partnership, and I just wanted to give a time for questions if anyone has any questions for me. Don't ask me about what happened at the school board meeting today, though, because I was busy in other meetings and I have not seen that yet. So I would have to actually go back and watch that to know what they did.
Tell us a little. Anyone have any questions for Courtney?
Yes. Tell us a little bit about, I don't have school age children anymore, so I'm not as in tune with the schedule as proposed. If you could educate us a little bit about what is the proposed schedule and timelines and things of that nature.
Okay. So I believe that the plan that the board is looking at today is what the state called the Governor Cooper called Plan B.
So I've asked you the question about the school board meeting that you didn't want to ask.
Yeah, that's okay. Dr. Phelps did meet with principals yesterday and give us a little bit of information about what the proposal is. Of course, until the board approves it, that's not something that is set. But we're planning for the Plan B that Governor Cooper talked about. That is somewhat of a reduced capacity, but making sure that we maintain social distancing. And we will run, I believe, something like an A A B B schedule. So students who choose to come back, now students and families have the choice to choose 100% remote learning if they do not feel comfortable returning. But if they feel comfortable returning, they would return, and each student would attend school in person two days a week, and they would do remote learning for three days a week. And they are assigned their days based on whether they're Group A or Group B, and I believe we're going to go with Alphabet. And of course, if there are situations in which families need transportation, for instance, a grandparent is picking up grandchildren with different last names, the schools will work with those families and accommodate their needs.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And the school board did approve the Plan B this afternoon, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any idea about sports or chorus and band? Any thoughts? It doesn't have to be with the school board, no thoughts yet?
No. Q Tucker with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, we're still under Phase One of athletic participation. So we do have students who are on campus, meeting the required state guidelines, and they are doing like skills and drills and doing workouts, but there's no actual interaction between students at this time. So we are still in that phase, and we are in that phase until we hear otherwise. I would hope for our students, we have many students who come to school, and the one thing that they love is participating in athletics, and that's kind of the driving force behind them actually doing better in their academics. So I hope that in some capacity, we're able to do that, only if we're able to do it in a safe way that we protect our students and our community.
Very good.
I had one other question about what programs High Brighton has in place, and it may be consistent among all three high schools, for kids that are not college bound. So tell me a little bit about the vocational education experience at High Brighton.
Awesome. That's a great question. So we used to call it vocational classes. Now they call it career and technical education. So they have, education has an acronym for everything, so it's CTE. So we have courses that prepare students to go into nursing. So we have students who graduate and they're already CNAs, so they're already employable. We have lots of our career and technical education classes offer credentialing so that when they go into the workforce, they already have some of the credentials. For instance, they can already be certified in Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Publisher, all of those programs. We have early childhood education, foods and nutrition, interior design. It's just a large array of masonry. So different schools do offer different things based on what their student needs are. But at High Brighton, it's very important to us that we prepare kids for three options after high school. They are prepared if they want to join the military, if they want to go straight into a career, or if they want to go on to college. And we have to make sure whatever their plans are after high school, that they are prepared for that.
Good.
And one of the things I would like to do in my partnership with the city of Lenore and the community is work with businesses and see what are the skills that they are looking for, what credentials do students need if they want to go straight into the workforce.
That's good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Courtney? Courtney, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Thank you for letting us know what's going on. We do want to be a great partner with High Brighton High School and the Caldwell County school system in any way we can, so please let us know when we can help you with anything. Call on us for partnerships. I know Chief Hare and Chief Phelps especially will be partnering with you a great deal on many things. So if there's any other things that we can help with, please let us know because we love the school and we want it to be successful. We'll know you'll do a great job. You always have wherever you've been. So thank you for taking this on, and we look forward to a really great year and a great bunch of years, I hope, at High Brighton High School.
Thank you, Mayor Givens.
You're welcome very much. Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to a matter that we have scheduled for public hearing this evening. This is a charter code amendment for traffic, Appendix B, Section 101, Point A, on street parking only in designated spaces. This hearing, we held to consider amending the city's code of ordinances for traffic Appendix B to include the proposed Section 101, Point A, on street parking only in designated spaces consistent with the attached memorandum. Upon approval, city council will adopt the submitted ordinance. Open the public hearing for any discussion or whatever. I know that Chief Phelps has been working on this, his department, Jared Wright, and his department have been working on this and have put together a great plan for us and on these things as it comes up. So this is something we will discuss tonight. We will, after we close the public hearing tonight, we won't be able to vote on this till our August the 4th meeting according to the way the rules set up for these Zoom-type meetings and the way we have to do it. But anyway, we want to go ahead and discuss that tonight, and if there's any questions about what we're doing or what's going on there, please ask them at this time. So open up the public hearing for any discussion.
Mayor Givens, this is Jared Wright, Director of Public Works. I would like to just say that this, tonight's public hearing and this discussion is a continuation of the presentation that was made during the June 23 Committee of the whole meeting. Over the last several months, we have received comments from concerned citizens on the one-way portion of Norwood. Police Department initiated a traffic and parking study there several months ago. In early June, the Public Works Department was asked to provide options for parking or delineating spaces on one section of Norwood. The section of street that we identified with the highest density and highest number of concerns that were voiced to us was from the College Avenue intersection of Norwood, 1,000 feet south. That area was identified as the area with highest density. So we focused on that area and identified over the course of our work, 17 potential parking spaces that may be striked on the street. Currently, there are no striked parking places. We had two goals with our work and analysis. One, that was to minimize impacts to vehicular traffic from driveways, whether that's a pull-out movement or a back-out movement. Our other goal was to maximize spaces. So we had two competing interests there, one being provide safety for people exiting driveways and also maximize opportunities for parking on the street since on-street parking has happened on Norwood forever. We'll just say that. I don't have a timeframe there, but as long as I can remember, on-street parking has been allowed. So with that being said, we did identify 17 spaces in that 1,000-feet corridor of Norwood Street. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. The memo was in your packet tonight, as well as being presented originally at the June 23 Committee of the whole meeting. Open for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jared or Chief Phelps? Also, Chief Hare, I know he was involved too with our fire department being able to get trucks down the street when they had to go down. That's been one of the biggest issues, is getting traffic down a street like Norwood Street, very narrow street with on-street parking on that. And then, of course, the driveway issue was a really big deal because people were blocking other driveways where they were parking. So that's the reason, I think, behind trying to designate it, make sure that it's in the right area. So we appreciate the great work on this, you guys, and putting it all together as we move on this. I think the neighborhood seems to be really excited about what's going on, and well, hopefully that'll be a good situation to put together to make it a lot better than it has been. We'll open it up for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ben Willis. That was going to be my question, is you live on that street, and I think it's a great plan. Chrissy lives on that street. I used to live on that street. My question is, what does the neighborhood feel, and are they excited about it and that sort of thing?
I'll answer that quickly first, and then I'll let them answer it as well. But everybody, the conversations that I've had with our up-street neighbors, they're all very excited about it. There's been a lot of issues, and I think now at least there's a way to have some control of it where people are parking to get in and out of driveways. So everyone seems to be really excited. Hopefully, Chief Phelps and the guys did a good job early on and starting out, went down and talked to people and put some flowers out and papers out and asked people to move off the street that didn't really, didn't need to park on the street. And so a lot did, but a lot have yet to do that. But I think this is going to help even more as we get more and more people into the driveways and off of the street. So I think it's got a real chance for great success.
And I would just echo and agree with the mayor, this topic has been going on for some time, and I think the citizens are just appreciating the structure and the fact that we're trying to get something this organized and a little, that's better control. So I think it's timely, and the citizens seem pretty excited about it.
Any other comments or discussion questions about this particular charter code amendment?
We can't make a motion, right?
No. We will have to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Which I'll do right now since there's no other discussion. If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will certainly, we'll have to make a motion concerning this at our meeting on August the 4th, our next council meeting. We will, if there's no other discussion, we will call for the question at that time.
I'll make a motion that we defer this to the August the 4th meeting.
Okay. I have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem Thomas that we defer this till the August the 4th meeting. Any other question, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. We will bring this up for a vote on our August 4th meeting. All right, we'll move on then to consent agenda items is our next on agenda that are consisting of minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. We have minutes from our committee, the whole meeting of June 23rd, 2020, as submitted. We have Item C, our minutes of the closed session minutes of a special called city council meeting of Wednesday, July 1st, 2020, as reviewed by the city attorney, city council, and the city manager. And Item D is an agreement with the water spark software, which is a recommendation of approval of the council to authorize the city manager to execute the software as a solution provisions with the water salt software for the development of the customer portal as provided for in the service agreement with Mueller Systems LLC for the meter replacement project. At item C through D, I will open the consent agenda for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept items A, B, C, and D of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D. No other discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on then. We do not have, I don't think we have any requests of any petitions of any citizens. Is there anyone? Okay, we do not have those. No reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager. Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, the planning board meeting for the 27th has been canceled. Their next scheduled meetings, Monday, August 24th, at 5:30 in the council chambers. The committee of the whole meeting for July has been canceled. The next committee of the whole meeting will be on Tuesday, August 25th, 8:30, Third Floor City Hall. The Foothills Airport Authority will have a called meeting on July 29th at noon, and that'll be a Zoom meeting. And lastly, I guess sad news with all the cancellations, the annual Harambee Festival has been canceled for this year along with the Summer Music Festival due to the COVID-19.
All right. Any questions or discussions of those? Certainly sorry about the festival, the Harambee, our oldest running festival in Caldwell County in our city, and we will miss that as we miss so many things that we've had to miss this over the last few months. But hopefully, it'll all be back soon, we hope. I guess you've got an item for council action, Mr. Hildebrand?
We do. City council tonight, we have a bid award for the 2020-2022 asphalt resurfacing contract. Staff put out a RFQ and RFP for folks to respond. You have your packet, the bid results. The lowest responsible bidder was May Mead, Inc. for $82 a ton. I would say, and Jared, if you want to get up and speak about that, we had a great price reduction from the previous years, and he may want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure, I'll be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. Looking back all the way to our two-year asphalt contract bids, year 2014, 2014, the bid price was $88.50 per ton. 2016, the bid price was $82.50 per ton. 2018, my first year advertising this contract, it was $93 per ton, and this year, our low bid was $82 per ton. So you can see, this is an outstanding number. That can be attributed to a couple of factors. I think paving contractors need some work, and also liquid asphalt is currently really low. In your packet, I have included a trending graph. Liquid asphalt pricing is adjusted monthly. Those adjustments come out the first of the month. Those are published through NCDOT. As you can see, looking at that trending graph, liquid is really low, and liquid being a major component of the asphalt mix that's actually placed. With liquid being low, I think that's helping our bid numbers come down. Be glad to answer any questions.
Jared, do you have any idea how to present this, but based on a prior year, how much more, how many more miles or feet can we place asphalt based on that price reduction?
If you just say roughly, we're paying eight to nine percent lower per ton. If we pave four miles, we'll pave 4.7, 4.8. So I mean, it could amount to an additional mile.
Good deal.
And with the trending that we're seeing, liquid may continue to fall, and we do have a provision in our contract stating that price escalations or fluctuations are reflected in the unit price. So if liquid continues to fall, that number, we may pay lower than that $82 a ton if work is.
We're not at a floor going in.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. It works both ways.
And we did bump the budget this year to add more paving dollars. One of the priority projects we've already talked about is Mulberry Street in front of the hospital. They spent $35 million improving that block, so that road ranks high on our list to go back to priority paving. So that's one of the things we'll focus on, but we did bump paving money this current fiscal year.
That's great. That's something that's very visible to our citizens to see what the city's doing.
Any other questions of Mr. Wright concerning our awarding of this contract to the May Mead company? And I guess we have to do this also at the August 4th meeting as well?
No, sir. No, sir. You can vote on that tonight.
What now?
You can vote tonight.
So we can, we can vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I didn't quite catch you there. I lost you for a minute. All right. You heard the recommendation for the bid award for FY 2020 through FY 2022, our asphalt resurfacing contract awarded to May Mead Incorporated is the lowest bidder. If there's any other questions, I'll take them now. I will call for a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this bid award as it has been presented for May Mead.
Thank you. Councilmember, I accept the bid award as presented from May Mead. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're muted. I got muted. Sorry about that. Anyway, it passes. We appreciate that, and we will appreciate Jared's hard work on putting that together. All right, we'll move on then to, anything, anything else, Hildebrand, could you add?
I just want to mention that we, I got a question today, earlier today, about the COVID testing for employees. So far, we've had 19 employees tested. 16 came back negative. We've had three positive tests for employees, one in Parks and Rec, one in Fire, and one in Public Works, but two are currently active, so.
Thank you for that. An update on those things, we hope everyone will be safe and healthy soon, but please everyone continue to be safe as you can in all your situations out there. Please wear the mask and do everything you possibly can when you get to opportunity. Thank you for that. Nothing else from the city manager's office? We'll move on then. Anything to report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Anything to report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Look sharp tonight, by the way. You look a nice-looking jacket, I love it.
Thank you very.
Dapper.
Thank you very.
We'll move on then to, I do have a board appointment for the Menor Tourism Development Party. I would like to continue, and we recommended a couple weeks ago, Pam Fusciowski, the general manager of the Hampton Inn and Suites, to be appointed to our Lenore Tourism Development Authority. And we first brought her up on our June 16 meeting, so I'd like to now bring her up to be appointed on that position, on that board at this time. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the board appointment to the LTDA.
Okay. Mayor Protem Thomas makes a motion to approve Pam Fusciowski to the LTDA board. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. She'll do a great job with us, we appreciate that, and we appreciate the Hampton Inn and Suites being a great part of our city in many ways, so that's a good thing. We'll move on then to report recommendations of any of our council members, if you want to have anything to bring before the council tonight. All right. Not hearing anybody, I don't think. If not, I think we have covered everything, unless there's something else that needs to come before us. Thank you all, we appreciate you being with us this evening. Everyone, continue to be safe. I will see you in a few days. Looking forward to it. Have fun and be safe.
Have fun.
Council meeting is adjourned.